Nine o'clock. Chairman Hansen, we'd like to get started.
Yes, I would, and we're ready to record.
Yes.
Staff is ready. And I want to welcome everybody today for today's planning commission. And Janice, at the beginning, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Janice.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Chairman Hansen.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
Thank you. Beginning of every planning commission, we have an opportunity for the public to address orally the commission on items that are not on today's agenda. Has anyone requested, Janice?
None.
None. We have nobody online who wishes to speak to items that are not on today's agenda?
I don't see any hand raised for that, no.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll... Normally, we consider the consideration of minutes. There's a request that we postpone this to the next meeting, which I'll so honor. Then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull the consent agenda off and discuss it? I don't see anybody. So can I get a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda?
So moved. So moved.
A second?
Second.
Can I do a roll call, please?
Excuse me?
I'll do a roll call.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chairman Hansen.
Thank you. For those who are online and watching the meeting for the first time, I'll just outline how we would normally proceed on regular agenda items. Staff will present the report. The applicant then has the ability to present their case, if they so wish, to the commission, at which point this... The commission will ask questions, will do this, and we will specifically ask each commissioner for some time if they wish to ask questions. After we finish asking all our questions, we'll be open for discussions for the public. When that's closed, we'll take it back to the commission. We'll have follow-up questions, followed by a discussion. And then, if so, go to a motion if we can find consensus. Janice, can you read in the first item?
Item number two on the regular agenda. Owner: Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space. Applicant: Brian Apple. File number PLN 2019-00086. Location: Sears Ranch Road in La Honda. And the project planner is Kelsey Lang.
With staff, please present the case.
Good morning.
Morning.
Share this now. Hey, so this morning, I'll be presenting PLN 2019-00086, which is a resource management permit and grading permit. This project extends on an existing trail and parking lot use at the property, which is part of the La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve and was approved under PLN 2016-00482. The project includes the construction of a 1.05 mile loop trail, which extends from this existing parking lot and connects to the existing Harrington Creek Trail. It includes approximately 675 cubic yards of grading. There are no creek crossings proposed and no trees have been identified for removal as the trail will be built around the trees to the extent possible. Any vegetation that needs to be removed will be replaced with native species. Given the nature of the preserve, there are a number of special status species found on or near the property. The mitigation measures from the CEQA document, as well as recommendations from a biological assessment, have been included as conditions of approval to protect these species. Here we have an overview of the site. You can see it outlined in green. And then, on the right-hand portion of the site, you can see the scenic corridor overlay with the slashed lines there. We zoom into the site. On the right-hand side, you can see La Honda Road. And then, on the left-hand side, you can see the existing parking lot and the existing trail. And the proposed trail will be in the area of the yellow box approximately. Here are some images of the site. It has mostly grasslands with some areas of redwood forests. And the proposed trail alignment. So this is the same layout as we were looking at before with La Honda Creek... La Honda Road on the right with the purple arrow pointing to it. The existing parking lot is on the left with the yellow arrow pointing to it. And the existing trail is that dark dashed line with the green arrow pointing to it. The proposed trail is the lighter hashed line with three of them together that has the red arrow pointing to it and forms a loop from the parking lot up to connect to the existing trail. This property is designated as open space rule in the general plan and conforms to all the policies of the general plan with specific emphasis on the natural resource policies, the visual resource policies, and the parks and recreation policies. In our zoning regulations, it's zoned as resource management. A portion of it is within the county scenic corridor. This property is also outside of the coastal zone. It conforms with the development standards and the development review criteria for this zone, including environmental quality, site design, water and cultural resources, and scenic resource area criteria. With the 675 cubic yards of grading work, approximately 600 of those are for cut and 75 for fill. And this is to accommodate some one-foot buttressed retaining walls along the edge of the trail, as well as to ensure that the trail doesn't exceed more than 2% lateral grade change. And the proposal does conform to the regulations of the grading ordinance. Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District conducted their own mitigated negative declaration. And the county, which is a responsible agency in this application, has reviewed that and found that it sufficiently addresses the scope and impact of the proposed project. Applicable mitigation measures from that document have been incorporated as conditions of approval. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the resource management permit and the grading permit by making the required findings for these permits and for the environmental review and adopting the conditions of approval as listed in attachment A.
Thank you. I will now proceed to the commissioners and see if they have any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Gupta. Do you have any questions, the staff? Come, come, you're muted.
Right, okay. Here I go. I have few questions on the different aspects of it. But the first one I would like to know is that there's a... In the staff report, it says that they will be continuing to do grazing in this area, recreational activities and others. What is it used for right now?
The property is currently used for recreational activities with the existing trail. It's my understanding there is some grazing as well as part of the overall plan program for this preserve.
Okay. So the trail, it would be somehow separated or cordoned off in some way or the other so that the other activity, the activities you mentioned, can continue? Or does it kind of blend in? I'm not getting a good feel from the pictures.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they are somewhat separated in order to protect the agricultural activities while protecting the hikers. But perhaps the applicant could speak to that a little bit further.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a mention that the bike... It's a bike trail also?
I don't believe bicyclists were permitted on this. I believe there's horseback riding and hiking for this trail.
Okay. So going along the same lines as the bikes, but there was some mention of bikes. And my question was, does the... Does... Is there a bike rack or something that would be provided in the parking lot? Or do people just park them there if they come on bikes?
So the parking lot is existing already. And I understand there are some restroom facilities there, as well as garbage facilities. I'm not sure if there is a bike rack facility there or not. I believe the reference to cycling that you're... We're looking at is in reference to transportation to the park and that cycling would not be a primary mode of transportation to the park.
And there are some... How many parking spaces are there in the parking lot?
I believe there were 20 or so.
About that many, yes. That's what I assumed. Thank you. Chair, at this time, I don't have questions, but I may have some more later. Thank you.
Mario, you have any questions, the staff?
Yes, I do. I have a question so far for Casey. I read in the report that there may be a possibility of removing some trees, whatever possible. But they have not specified what kind of tree. And if there is a possible removal of the tree, how many trees are we talking about?
Yes, so they are planning to place the trail around existing trees to avoid removing trees whenever possible. There may be the possibility of a tree needing to be removed if there is no other place to put the trail. When we looked at the plan for the trail and you saw the three lines together, that's sort of the corridor that they would be using. So they would move the trail within that corridor to avoid tree removals if possible. Should a tree removal be required, the applicant is required to notify us of that.
So means that it's a possible tree? Because let me just say, I'm not an architect. But if you design the trail where to go about it, at the point of setting out the trail, you probably know how many trees they may be removed or not. So I would like to know, though, if they already designed the trail, for sure they know the possibility of the trees. And before going on, and my point of view with this is, I want to know if there is any trees to be removed. How many and what type of tree would it be?
They're not intending to remove any trees at this point. But the trail will be laid out exactly in the field. And at that point, they will be able to confirm that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hansen.
Commissioner Ramirez, any questions?
Yeah, I have a little bit of a concern with regards to, you know, the additional number of people that may use the area, which would mean that we may need a little more restroom capabilities. And so I know there's some facilities already there. I wonder if, you know, there's a significant number of people, if it has to be expanded. And also, how is the existing system working? Is that on a septic system? Or does it get collected by a service provider? How is that handled?
Yeah, the existing facilities are pumped out as needed by a service provider. The existing trail and parking lot that were approved in 2016, as well as this trail, is part of a master plan that the La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve has considered a number of trails and properties. And this is the slow development of that master plan. So when they created these facilities, they did consider the full build-out in creating them.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ketchum, any questions? Lisa, you're muted. Lisa, you have to repeat your question.
Does the ag advisory committee, can you hear me?
Yes.
Does their purview extend beyond planned ag permits and other permits on planned ag district land or such as this parcel, which is resource management?
Agricultural advisory committee's purviews is for coastal agricultural properties. So properties within the coastal zone that have agriculture or are related to agriculture, primarily those that are in the planned agricultural district property.
Okay, and this property is not in the coastal zone?
It is not in the coastal zone, and it is a resource management zone rather than a planned agricultural district.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gupta, do you have any follow-up questions?
Um. My question really, I think they are going to be for the applicant. So I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner Santa Cruz, any follow-up questions?
No, thank you. I might have a question for the applicant as well.
Commissioner Ramirez?
No.
Commissioner Ketchum?
No.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to present? The applicant wish to speak at this point?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. This is Brian Apple, Capital Projects Field Manager with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. And as Ms. Lang mentioned, this is an approximately one-mile trail that was envisioned as part of the La Honda Creek Master Plan process. And I heard one of the commissioners ask if bikes were going to be a component of this project. And this trail will be hiking and equestrian only. The intent of this trail is to provide an easy access trail, a small loop coming off of the Sears Ranch parking area for La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve. So what that means is we minimize grade on the trail, minimize cross slope as the maximum extent practicable. The trail will be surfaced with an aggregate base material that will need to be maintained consistently to provide sort of a uniform surface for trail users. The intent would be to allow folks, you know, if they're interested to push strollers on the trail, you know, folks who have, you know, some mobility challenges may be able to use this trail, especially given its proximity to the parking lot. So, you know, we look for opportunities throughout the district to provide these types of trails to the public. And given generally the rugged nature of the terrain throughout our agency, you know, these opportunities are fairly limited. So this trail presents a great opportunity to provide that access to the public and to provide an easy access trail. There was a question from a commissioner also about the cattle grazing operation and public access at the site. So as of right now, we do have multiple grazing tenants on La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve. We do have a trail that currently runs through active grazing area. And so this will be a similar approach to what we have. We'll have self-closing gates that are compliant with the ADA that allow for the public to access the trail and the gates close behind them to prevent the cattle from moving to areas where they're not supposed to be. We've worked very closely with our grazing tenant on this project, and we work closely with San Mateo County Farm Bureau as well, advising them on the nature of the projects that we're planning to implement. Another project I... Or another question I heard from a commissioner was a question about tree removals. So the predominant vegetation type on the project area is grassland. So it's primarily grazed pastureland. And there's a short segment that extends through sort of mixed redwood forest. And the intent there, you know, our district crew, which are expert trail construction folks, will be the ones building the trail. And so we work very closely to avoid trees to the maximum extent practicable. And based on the alignment at this point, there are no trees identified for removal. There may be some brush clear... Like brush trimming to be able to move the cord... The trail corridor through areas with large amounts of poison oak. But as far as actual tree removals, we do not intend to remove any trees at this point. You know, once you get into the redwood forest, the spacing between the trees is pretty broad and allows for us to build adequate trail bench without removing any of the native tree species in that area. You know, occasionally, we will encounter some unknown issue that will require us to reroute the trail. But in that situation, we would work with San Mateo County to alert them of any changes to the project, such as a tree removal. But at this point, we don't intend to remove any trees. And sort of one additional note, originally, this project included another 2.4 miles of trail that would have extended along La Honda Creek. We went through an analysis with some environmental consultants looking at wetlands, rare plant species, vegetation removal, underlying geology, and determined that trail to be... That trail segment to be infeasible due to the number of sensitive resources in that area. And as sort of a broader note about the La Honda Creek Master Plan, we are looking at future trail connections, exploring options right now, looking at reusing, you know, legacy logging and ranching roads to create trail connections that would extend from the Sears Ranch parking area through the center of the preserve, all the way up to the northern segment and a future connection to our El Corte de Madera Creek Open Space Preserve, which would be our multi-use mountain biking, hiking, and equestrian trail connection. And with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the commissioners may have.
Thank you. I'll start off with Commissioner Gupta. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes. So I have... I would like to ask you, how wide is the trail going to be?
So the trail is approximately four to five feet wide. And there are... We will be implementing some passing areas for those folks who will be using strollers or other options. And the trail extends slightly wider at those locations.
Great, great. Because my question was coming from social distancing, the latest thing that we are facing right now. So we should... In our plans, I'm glad that you are including that. The next question is, is there any kind of lighting there? Or what are the opening hours of this trail? Or is it open all the time?
So for our preserves, they're open from dawn until a half hour after dusk. So there is no lighting included. And typically, our trails are in very natural settings where lighting can disrupt, you know, natural wildlife patterns and such.
Okay. So is there a gate that closes?
Yes, we have an automatic gate that closes the preserve. It's based on a timer that our ranger staff implement. And they check on the parking lot to ensure folks are out of there and that there's no issues going on.
Excellent, excellent. That's great. The other question that I have is, in one of the conditions for approval, there's a mention of emergency access onto these trails. So how does that work?
So we work closely with other agencies in the area. So CAL FIRE, San Mateo County. And basically, we have various lock systems on our gates that allow for emergency access, whether it's a wildfire. So CAL FIRE would be accessing that. You know, some sort of criminal issue, you know, San Mateo County has access to locks on these gates. And so those gates would be the gates that allow access into the parking lot. And then there's a gate that allows access onto the Harrington Creek Trail, which is a vehicle width trail. And then, so that, you know, if there is an emergency, they would access from there, you know. And if it's like an injury, you know, they could access the trail on foot. Or we have various emergency landing zones as well for helicopters in case of a larger issue.
Okay. So does this other trail, you mentioned Harrington Trail? I don't remember the name. Does that intersect this trail or the...
Yes, that's correct. So the loop trail basically extends from the existing parking area, traverses the grazing pastureland around a knoll through the forest, comes back out onto pastureland, and then connects out a quarter mile up Harrington Creek Trail. So it allows for this short loop that integrates the existing Harrington Creek Trail.
Thank you, thank you. So what is... What is the... Just a moment. So what is the next step? If this gets approved, these permits get approved, what is the next step that's taken?
So what we will do is, we will work with San Mateo County on any additional approvals necessary. So going through the building department at San Mateo County. Once we have all the permits issued from the county, we conduct our pre-construction surveys that are necessary per the mitigation measures dictated by CEQA. We also have retained a biological consultant to help assist with those pre-construction surveys. And then, we would initiate construction with all of the, you know, required mitigation measures taken care of ahead of that. And our district construction crew would implement the trail. It's similar to some of our other projects we've implemented with the county of San Mateo, including trail construction projects at El Corte de Madera Creek Open Space Preserve, Russian Ridge Open Space Preserve, and others.
Okay. And my last question is, what would be the duration of this project once it starts?
So from groundbreaking to project completion, we estimate it's about eight to 12 weeks of construction, which would take place during San Mateo. we estimate it's about eight to 12 weeks of construction, which would take place during San Mateo County's grading season, which is from May 1st through October 1st. And it depends, you know, what, when we initiate construction would depend on when we have our final approvals through San Mateo County and also is subject to the shelter in place order that we are all currently experiencing. We have other tasks that may be priority over this project. Once the order is lifted, other kind of life and safety projects that our crew will need to be diverted to work on, depending on how long the shelter in place order lasts.
Okay. And, and the funding is in place for it?
That's correct. This is a project that's funded through our Measure AA bond measure that was passed in 2014.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz, any more questions?
I have one question on the, about one of the letters that we received. They were concerned if this project had been reviewed or submitted to the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Has it?
That's a good question. That's a good question. We've, we've consulted with the San Mateo County Farm Bureau, but I will need to check with our planning department on the Agricultural Advisory Committee.
Yeah, because I, I, based on the information that I got to read on this thing, it's like contingent upon any approval of this project. So if we go ahead and review and approve it, then we need to know whether this is a condition to, for approval.
Chairman Hanson, if I may address that comment, please?
Sure.
So I believe the person who sent that letter is wanting to speak. So the commission will have a chance to hear from them. The staff's response is, as Kelsey had stated, and that is that our interpretation of the requirements for the Agricultural Advisory Commission's review is that they apply in the coastal zone and primarily on lands zone for planned agriculture. This property is neither. It's resource management and it's outside of the coastal zone. So staff's view is that the review by the Agricultural Advisory Committee is not required.
Okay.
Any more questions?
No.
So Lisa?
No questions.
Hey. All now then proceed to opening us up for public comment. I understand we do have people. So I'll turn it over to Janice to handle the, the order of that.
Thank you, Chairman Hanson. We are conducting public comment today in both written comment and verbal comment via Zoom by using the raise your hand feature. At this point, I would like to introduce my colleague Sukmani Puriwal, who can give us more information.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you guys all hear me? Perfect. Thank you. Chair Hanson. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, you will, you will use the raise hand feature in order to organize any public comments. When you hear your name called, I will send you the request to unmute your mic. And once you accept the request, you can begin talking. You will be given five minutes and my colleague Janet Luan will show the timer on the screen. I will now ask those members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item to click their raise hand feature now. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Chair, I do have two speakers. Joe Kirsten Tucker, please on your screen to unmute your mic and begin speaking. You will have five minutes to speak. Let you know when your, 30 seconds is left and then once again, when your time ends.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, commissioners. It's nice to see you all. I'm here basically to speak in, in favor of approving this resource management permit and grading permit. I reside in Moss Beach and I am a member of the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District Board of Directors. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for this project. The La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve is one of the gems of San Mateo County. It's a large preserve that the district is working very hard to create access to, particularly in the center part of the preserve, which is where this is located. The parking lot where the trail will originate is a lovely level parking lot with a very well-maintained restroom. And the thing I love the most about this trail is that it provides access to people in wheelchairs, to parents with kids in strollers, where you can actually be out and see the cattle grazing. We use conservation grazing extensively in this area. So it's one of the few places where people can get out into the open, into our open spaces and actually see ranchland being actively grazed and utilized in a very beautiful setting. So I encourage you to move forward with this. We certainly need more access to our open spaces in these crazy times we're living in. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. Good to hear from you again.
Thank you.
Onto our next speaker.
Sure. Chair Hanson, the next speaker I have is from phone number ending in 2489. I will allow you to talk now. And if, for the record, if you want to state your name, you may. So please go ahead and accept my request.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Morning, Chair Hanson and Commissioners and Zoe and Steve and Cam. I would like to point out to the commission that the La Honda Creek Preserve now encompasses at least three major ranches, I think, in, in a minimum six historically separate ranches that have been combined and into what is referred to now as a preserve. And what I'm concerned about preserving on these ranches is ranching. And I think that I'm not alone in that. And I think MRSD is trying to do both recreation and and grazing and even natural habitat value enhancement. And that's commendable. But I do want to, I guess, first start out addressing Commissioner Ketchum's question as to whether the Agricultural Advisory Committee has any, or should have any interest in, in what goes on, on these ranches. And in 2003, 2004, the Board of Supervisors entertained the question as to exactly what the portfolio of the, the committee is. And it resolved via rev, resolution that the committee's purview was preserving agriculture in San Mateo County. I want to point out that the general plan conformance of the Driscoll Ranch is, which is one of the, the three ranches, three main groups of ranches that make up the La Honda Preserve, that general plan conformance came before the Agriculture Advisory Committee. And so I, I want to point to page 11 in staff's report where it says that the project proposes to take, to continue grazing activities on the property in conjunction with the recreational uses. Agroprac, agricultural practices on the property will be guided by the MRSD Resource Management Policies as well as MRSD Coastal Service Plan. These plans include guidelines to ensure that grazing supports and is compatible with wildlife and wildlife habitat to protect farmland by requiring buffers for development and trails near farmland and to ensure any actions that may impact agriculture operations are vetted by local farmers and ranchers. I want to emphasize that I think that this project should have come before the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And I also want to say, indicate in that I'm, 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 I'm not only on the committee, but on the Farm Bureau Board, that this project did not come to the Farm Bureau as a project. I think the Farm Bureau in early part of the last decade did look at the master plan. And I would encourage the commission to look at the mitigated negative declaration that was done for the master plan, which is an unusual document in itself, and that mitigated negative deck isn't usually sufficient for a project of, of programmatic nature as this one is. But I just happened to look at it for the first time this morning to see a map, which includes the proposed project, which as you know, is a one mile, give or take, one mile, give or take trail. And, and it is a part of a, the, the, La Honda Creek Loop Trail, which is 4.3 or eight, I guess it is, miles, but there are a total of 30 miles planned for this preserve for these ranches, 30 miles of trail.
Okay, I need you to start wrapping up. Final comment?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Janice?
Chair Hanson?
Yes.
So at this time, I've called upon all the raised hands for speaking on this item. I'll provide maybe 10 more seconds in case there are any other hands that, that needs to be raised.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, Chair Hanson, there are no more raised hands for this item. I believe we're done with public comment.
And Janice, you said you received an email?
Correct. That was the email that was shared with you from Mr. Ron Sturgeon that just spoke.
That'll be submitted to the, for the record.
Correct. That was the only one.
And all the commissioners have read it?
Yes.
Okay, then we won't read it into the record because it'll just be submitted with the record.
Great. Can I do a roll call to close public comment?
Yes. So we're gonna call.
I, I move, I move that we close public comment at this time.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have, go, proceed to roll call.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Chairman Hanson?
Aye. So thank you. We're in our discussion portion. Does staff have any comments from, they want to follow up from the, this public?
Thank you, Chair Hanson. I'd like to thank Mr. Sturgeon for participating today and for his continuous efforts to protect agriculture in, in the county. So thank you, Ron, for your contributions. I certainly understand Ron's perspective and I don't necessarily disagree with his or other members of the ag committees' desire to have broader review of some of these projects. And I think that that is something that we can work with them to address as we move forward. As for this particular project, we don't believe that it is a requirement that the project go before the ag advisory committee. We recognize that the Mid Peninsula Open Space District really makes a strong effort to coordinate its projects with the local farmers and grazers and really does its best to maintain and maximize agricultural uses on the lands it owns. I believe that's the case with this project. I believe this modest trail will not diminish agricultural use of the property. And I would encourage the Planning Commission to adopt the staff recommendation of approval. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions the commissioners may have.
Commissioner Gupta, do you have any questions you want to ask the applicant or staff or?
No, I don't.
Santa Cruz?
Well, I have just an observation for Steve. What if Steve's saying that you believe, but you didn't say you have confirmed? I don't know if you mean by, by believing is confirming. But let's assume that you believe that this does not require an Agricultural Advisory Committee revision of this. What would be the consequences of, of approving a project that will, let's say, assume that will require Agricultural Advisory Committee approval or review before we approve it?
Well, I would say that in the event that any of the committee members are dissatisfied with the Planning Commission's decision on this application, they have the right to refer that decision to the Board of Supervisors.
So then if we approve and then the applicants or the people who are interested, considering that we fail to, to agree that they will, this project would require Agricultural Advisory Committee, they have the right to appeal to the board. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Ramirez, do you have any follow-up questions, discussions?
No, I actually, I think, I, what Steve just addressed, that was my question. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Well, I support this project and I'd be ready to make a motion when we're ready for that.
Unless I hear from the other commissioners, we could proceed to a motion.
Well, I, I do just want to, you know, make a quick comment on this. I know there's, you know, sometimes we'll come up to some of this situations where, you know, did everybody get a crack at making a comment and, you know, was sufficient? In this case, I'm going to say that, you know, I, I don't see a conflict adding trails along areas where there is agricultural happening, you know, because I, I think the, the public benefits a lot by being able to go into some of these areas and understand, I think this is, Kristen Tucker was just touching on that, that it's important for the public to be able to go and witness, you know, how all this takes place, you know, the agriculture and then all the beautiful areas that they, they can enjoy. So I think it's a great benefit to the public to be able to go to some of these places and learn and, you know, enjoy that we have it in the background, right on the, our backyard. So with that, I am going to also support this project. And as it's been stated, you know, if anybody wants to appeal this to the Board of Commissioners, they certainly have the right to do that.
Yeah, you know, having, having lived for a short time in an agricultural community and having been on a farm for 44 acres, we actually had a path that came through it. It was a social path. But it's important when you, people come through and actually observe farming as, as it is, you know. And, and it was, it was really enjoyable. And I would just, I think, I don't think we do enough of that, where we isolate people too often to the streets as opposed to being in the fields with the animals and seeing things, how everything just coexists with each other. So I'm, I'm definitely in support of this.
May I?
Please.
I, no, I, I'm fully in support for this project, especially like Commissioner Ramirez mentioned about being, seeing the agriculture. These days, children grow up without really having seen Children grow up without really having seen how things grow. And it's, it's, it's a good place for them to go out, families to go out there and just get a feel for what it is like. And we are so fortunate to be living in San Mateo County with so much of open space. So I think trail is just a very good idea.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Ketchum, are you ready for the promotion?
Yes, I move that we approve the resource management permit and grading permit, county file number PLN twenty nineteen zero 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 eight six. By making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval as listed in attachment A.
Second, oh, sorry, I second that.
Motion is second, um, Janice, will you go through roll call?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Hanson?
Aye. So we have unanimous approval. Congratulations. And we'll now proceed on to correspondence and other matters. Steve?
Yes, sorry, I thought I had unneeded, I had muted. So, uh, thank you, Chair Hanson, and good morning to you all, and let me, uh, start by wishing you all a happy Earth Day. The work that you do on the planning commission is really crucial to the protection of our environment and our natural resources, so here's a tribute to you on this Earth Day. I have no correspondence to report to you, so with permission of the chair, I'll move on to item number four regarding the study session for next. Um, I do not have a study session planned. We do have one item that is on the agenda and that is for a coastal development permit. To legalize some greenhouse development that occurred without a permit on Frenchman's Creek Road. This is the site of the first, um, cannabis cultivation license that's been issued by the county. Um, that license limits the operation to legally establish structures on the property. The property owner would like to make use of the greenhouses that were built without permits and is therefore seeking to legalize them through this coastal development permit application. So that's the one matter that we have before you, um, for the next meeting. As you know, I typically do not like to, um, schedule a planning commission meeting when we just have one item on the agenda. However, given our new Zoom format where you know, we have to take the long trip into county center. And our interest in trying to prevent a backlog of permits from occurring during this time. I'd like to proceed with the meeting, um, anyway, unless there's an objection from the commission.
You have my encouragement.
Okay, we will plan on doing that. So moving on to item five, the director's report. I just wanted to report to you about the two items that were on the board of supervisors' agenda and then I'll give you a little bit of an update on. Department activities in the era of COVID nineteen. So, um, with regard to the two items on the board agenda yesterday, the first was an amendment to a contract that the department has. With a, uh, technological consulting firm named Avicet. Avicet does all the background programming work for Exella, our online permitting system and database. The contract amendment that was approved by the board yesterday includes funds to do a comprehensive upgrade to our permitting system. In order to streamline the processing of permits and also to expand our online permitting capacity. And so we feel like this is a really important project, not only in terms of, um. Modernizing our processing system, but also in order to maximize opportunities for our customers to do business with us. From the comfort of their homes and to avoid the need to come into county center to do actions. So our hope is that this will not only make the process easier and more effective for them, but will also be a method by which we protect. At our staff and the public's safety. So, um, the other item that was on the board agenda yesterday was, um, an updated resolution. Authorizing the department to apply for a grant from the state, a planning grant. That will be used to amend North Fair Oaks Community Plan and associated zoning. Such that, um, we expand the areas designated for redevelopment. This is particularly along, um, the El Camino where in the original community plan. We only took the first line of properties fronting on El Camino. Um, and we only designated that first frontline as being eligible. What we found as, um, in, interested property owners and developers have pursued, um, development plans. Is that those properties are too small and narrow to accommodate the, um, density of development that. We would like to see that's called out by the community plan. So by expanding the redevelopment area to include the line of properties on the backside of these properties that, um, front on El Camino. We greatly increased the potential for achieving the housing development. That the original community plan sought to achieve. So the board approved that, um, resolution and we are now eligible to receive funds from the state. In order to conduct the environmental review that will accompany that plan amendment. So that was the purpose of, um, that second item on the board meeting yesterday, and I'll pause there to see if any of the commissioners have any questions about that.
That's a big item, that's going to have a significant impact. Going thinking along those lines.
Question, uh, the update for Exella, uh, I, I use Exella a lot and we're excited to hear this and hopefully, um. As these new features are rolled out, it will be clearly explained to the layperson who, uh, goes there. How, how these things work.
Yes, absolutely, um, one of our primary objectives of this project is to have, um, to improve the user experience. And so in addition to the backend programming that will be done, we'll be working on the frontend presentation. And really doing our best to provide a user-friendly interface where the general public will be able to make. Uh, use out of some of the very powerful tools that Exella has. So yes, Commissioner Ketchum, that is our hope and objective.
So there'll be more, um, examples of, uh, plans uploaded, you know, and responses, all that stuff that sometimes if you're following a project, you have to say, well, can I have a copy of that? Or, you know, so it'll be more of that routinely uploaded?
Yes, that's right, um, the objective is that, um, we will store all the public files associated with an application. On the Exella case and that the public would be able to access those files and the plans through Exella. Um, in addition, we want to have a geographic-based way for people to search pending projects. So if you're interested in what's happening on a parcel in your neighborhood. You will have the ability to go to that specific parcel and look to see what, if any, permit activities are associated with it.
That sounds great.
I'm gonna second that, uh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, uh, Steve, on, on those two points that you just mentioned, I think the, uh, the, uh, Exella, uh, that's an, um. Amazing tool that it's, you know, long, long overdue. You could have saved me a lot of money on my last plans that I just put in. And then, uh, on the, um, uh, North Fair Oaks, um, amendment to, um, to the general plan. Yeah, I think that's, that would be a great thing, you know, way back when, when we were working on this. Um, I always felt, and I think I brought it up many times, that El Camino was not going to be, uh, you know, a very good, a very efficient. At adding more, uh, housing there because those things were so, uh, narrow, so narrow and not very deep. So doing this, I think, is the right thing, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So, um, talking about this Avicet and Exella, I, I have not used it, so I don't know how it works. But what is the timeline of having the devised version available to the public?
Our target date for, um, full completion of the project is the end of this calendar year. Uh, but I would say that, um, we are making, um, quick progress in terms of expanding our capacity to. Process permits electronically, given our current situation. So this is probably a good segue into what I wanted to talk about next, which is, um, how the department is operating under our current circumstances and. Um, what I see as, um, unfolding in the next few weeks. So we are continuing to provide all the services that we traditionally provide, but using a remote workforce. The one exception to that is with regard to scheduling of inspections. As the commission is probably aware, when the health order was updated, it included some, um, significant restrictions on new construction. And we've limited the ability for, um, property owners and contractors to schedule inspections accordingly. So the only types of inspections that are occurring currently are for, um, projects that are allowed to proceed under. The shelter-in-place order. But in order to be able to continue processing permits using a remote workforce, we have really had to accelerate. Our work towards electronic plan, uh, intake and also electronic plan review. Traditionally, the department has relied on multiple sets of blueprints, hard copied blueprints to root projects to various referral agencies. Um, we have, um, now moved to an electronic method of both taking in the plans and rooting the plans for other agencies' review. So that's been a great benefit. We made, um, a lot of progress on that. And then also in terms of the way we interact with each other within the planning and building department and also with other reviewing agencies. We found that now that, um, most people are teleworking, that we've been able to establish systems for. Good coordination, which we'll be able to build upon as we perfect our Exella system. That will really help us achieve the goals of the project by the end of this year. So it's not like we're just starting from scratch right now and, you know, have the start date of now and an end date of the end of the year. We started long ago and we're making good progress and I feel confident that by the end of the year, we'll have a state-of-the-art electronic plan review program. Um, as well as the ability to accept all forms of permit applications online, which I think will be a very big step. So, um, with respect to, um, the next couple weeks. We have been directed by the county manager's office to prepare a remobilization plan. I submitted that on Monday of this week. And, um, what it entails is a very slow and careful return to normal operations. At this point in time, until we, um, have some clear indication from the health officer about how things might change. We intend to continue with, um, an entirely remote workforce with very limited exception. Although I haven't seen any immediate indication that the closure of our front office has had an adverse effect. I am concerned that there are members of our community and, um, clients and customers of ours. Who have not been able to do the business transactions that they may otherwise want to. Because they are either not cap, technologically capable of, you know, doing electronic submittals. Or there's some other reason. So I do want to open up our front office as soon as the health order allows. We will have, um, a skeleton crew, if you will, to make the, uh, to meet those needs. And then we will build up our office staff as demand dictates. The other thing is, uh, as soon as the health order allows, we will open up, um, our inspections to all forms of inspections. But we will continue to use the video-based platform that we started using once the health order took effect. And I'm really actually pretty excited about this. If there's been any silver linings from this is, um, you know, some of the. Things we've been able to achieve in terms of, um, electronic processing and remote inspections. Of, the inspectors are using a, um, online video inspection platform. Uh, that goes by the name of Blitz, B-L-I-T-Z-Z. If any of you are interested in taking a look at it online, there's probably a, a demonstration video. There's, um, multiple platforms and products that are being offered now, so Blitz is just, um, one of these services. We're trying it out, the inspectors really like it. And the, um, benefits are, in my view, are immense. They include having a video recording of the inspection for archival purposes, so if there's any questions about what occurred, you can. Uh, actually look to see what happened. It greatly increases inspector safety, so they no longer need to be, you know, necessarily climbing up on roofs or going under small crawl spaces. The contractors can do that and show that to them by video. And I think most importantly, um, they no longer have to drive all over this county to get to construction sites. Um, one of the, um, nice things about this Blitz program is it actually tracks the savings in mileage and emissions. By avoiding having to drive from site to site. So I think that there's great savings for the county, both in terms of fuel and emissions, as well as overall safety. So I'm really excited about that and, um, I'll be pleased to keep you informed as we continue to progress into this new. Method of doing business, but to conclude my thoughts about the next couple months. Like I say, we will be continuing to do most of our work remotely. We will open our counter as soon as possible. And, um, we will slowly resume, I think, to, uh, our pathways of doing businesses. At the same pace that you see the rest of other businesses adapting as well. So that concludes my report today and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, sorry, Chairman Hanson, I would like to chime in before we move on to item number six. Um, there is a member of the public who, um, raised her hand after her item was already approved, so it's up to you and your discretion. What you'd like to do with that.
Well, that's an interesting, well. It's already gone through the whole processes and closed, there is no way to reopen it at this point. Is there, so, and I don't think. I would like to, if they could capture what they want, so it gets included. But.
Well, um, if I might chime in, Chair Hanson, and I'll look to Tim, I, I don't think there's any problem if the commission desires to hear. What the person wants to say, um, it's, I think it would be okay for you to, um, listen, but I would say that the. Time for discussion and deliberation of the project has passed, so if you just want to hear out what this person has to say, unless Tim disagrees, I think. That's at your discretion.
Yeah, i- if you, uh, i- if you'd like, you could allow a, a member of the public to speak on an item as to which, uh, public comment is closed. Reconsideration of any, um, aspect of the item after it's already occurred is a little bit more complicated. Um, and we can address that if there's an interest in that, um, but, uh, for now, if you, you just want to find out, m- maybe the, uh. The member of the public is, is just not aware that the item was approved.
Um. What does the other commissioners feel? Would you like to hear the comment?
Well, you know, um, I think that's kind of like precedent setting. We already in the past, uh, once the public comment has been closed, then it's been closed. So, uh, in this point, now even the project has been approved. So, I mean, hearing a comment after the public comment has been closed and the project has been approved. It wouldn't make any sense to me, you know, I mean, if she wants to out, he or she wants to add their comment like you were suggesting. Commissioner Hanson? Commissioner Hanson, as part of the process, with the caveat that this, this information was submitted after the project has been approved. That's, that's a different story, you know, in, in that regard. I, I have also a comment with what Steve was just talking about it, but I can, I can put that on the side until we figure it out, until you decide what to, what you need to decide regarding this comment.
Manuel.
Hey, I, I think just to, I think to add it to the record, not that we should do anything with it at this time, because we've already gone through the process. But I think, you know, we should not, you know, put it on the record that someone wanted to say something about it and just be part of the record.
So you're saying let her speak, but?
Oh, yeah, allow the person to say whatever they have to say and just make it part of the record, not, not that we are going to reopen and try to do anything with it.
Okay. Kum Kum.
Yes, I thi- I think we should hear the person, and that's it. Nothing changes, part of the record. Maybe it would be useful in any of the future projects, who knows?
Well, I, I think that, you know, as we're going through this and we're, you know, trying to, you know, fix all the things that we have on the system. I don't know why we couldn't, you know, that this person wasn't allowed. And I'm thinking it's part of the problems that we're having, trying to figure out how this is supposed to work. But, you know, if we missed her, not that we're going to do anything about her other than listen and make this his or her comment be part of the record, just, you know, so that is part of the record. That's my take for this, so let's see what everybody else thinks.
Lisa.
I would have preferred if it came after the fact that it was submitted in writing to be part of the record. But since we've already talked about all this and she's, whatever, we can listen to it now.
Okay, yeah, my preference is I have it written, but we have it online.
Well, this has been recorded, so, you know, since this recording is part of the record, either, you know, on a video or I think it's just part of the record, I think, an archive for this particular meeting.
I mean, there's not evidence that we considered for our decision, and
Right.
Lisa always reflects that even though it may be valuable information, that there's nothing we plan to do.
We will do with it, right.
Let's move forward, hear what the cop person has to say, and with the understanding that we will not act upon it, it's more, kind of like a public comment at the end.
Right.
Commissioner, Chairman Hanson, this attendee did raise her hand after the item, so if we're going to open it up, do we have to open up the public comment one more time and then close it again, or?
No, you don't need to have a motion to allow the person to speak.
Go ahead.
Okay, Chair Hanson, I will ask Alexandra Barnhill to accept my request to talk.
Hello, Alexandra.
Hi there, my name is Alexandra Barnhill. I'm general counsel for the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. One of the members got it right, that I did not hear that the item had been considered and approved. I think the item moved very fast, and there's been some audio problems with your broadcast. So I think it just went faster than I was able to pick up on. But I want to thank you for approving the item. I did hear you say that as you were discussing whether or not to reopen this. And this was an important step for the Vector Control District to sell that property and consolidate some of its assets into a more centralized location around its headquarters. So I appreciate your time and sorry for the effort that you just went to, to figure out whether or not to open or close this particular comment.
No, I appreciate you giving a comment and spending the time to participate, you know, it's still a learning process for all of us. Overall, I viewed it today was extremely successful, but there are timing issues and making sure how we do this. I have a tendency of my own nature of moving faster than maybe this format produced. But again, thank you for leaving your public comment, and I wish you a good day.
Right, thank you.
Chair Hanson, there aren't any more raised hands, so I think we're good.
Thank you. So do we have any questions, comments?
I was gonna, I was gonna add, once we've, once we figured it out about this public comment. I'm just gonna thank Steve for trying to open up the front desk for people who are not technically savvy on this kind of situation. We faced that problem when I was working in the City and County of San Francisco Human Resources. And trying to computerize all the application. And we faced that there are janitor and other kind of like classification that they're not so they don't have access to those technical information, so it, it, it will be creating, it, it was, it was, it did create an impact, a negative impact on the number of applicants in certain racial groups. And so for, for, for your effort in trying to make this service accessible for people who are technically able to do so or not, that certainly is appreciated from my end.
You're welcome, and, you know, in the meantime, we are, of course, answering phones, and if someone gives us a call and needs help, we'll walk them through by phone. So we're doing our best to make sure everybody gets served.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I also just want to say, oh, thank you, Steve, I know that, oh, by the way, this is my, my support doc right here. That, yeah, no, thanks a lot for, you know, trying to accommodate. I think that we're, we're all trying to make quick adjustments that, that we didn't know that we needed to make, you know, a month ago. And anything that you guys can do for the public to, to continue to operate and, you know, be able to submit their permits and all that. That'd be of great help, and, you know, let's keep on going and, and try to make all the necessary accommodations to, to allow the, the public to participate.
I appreciate you saying that, Commissioner Ramirez, it's been somewhat of a tough situation being in between those who want to continue with construction and those who want to see all of the activities cease. And we had to make some difficult decisions about, well, will we, for example, issue a permit for non-essential construction? And the conclusion that we've reached is, yes, we will continue to issue permits, but with a disclaimer that identifies that the permutee is, you know, subject to compliance with the health order, because what we found is some people be, are have the need for their permit to be issued other than having to start construction. It might be a financial issue, it might be a contracting issue, so we're trying to keep things moving as best we can.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
My perception for today's meeting that it proceeded almost nearly flawlessly. I think, you know, this, this met all my expectations. I think this happened because of the backside. The planning, the excellence of your team, and everything that made this happen. This didn't go off well because of my accident. This went off well because of the time and effort you, you and your staff and Janet and everybody else who did this, so thank you. I, I'm really happy how today went.
Great, well, thank you for that, Chair Hanson, and thank you to Janet and Sukmani, they've really done all the legwork, and Tim for his legal advice. And for all, to all of you for being flexible and understanding and working with us on all the prep. So it's been a team effort, and we thank you for your support.
Anything else? Okay.
Are we moving on to number six, or have we done with? Okay, so the last, at the last meeting, we, we talked about some other project that was going to be on this week's meeting.
I think we're thinking of Cypress Point.
Right, right, when is that scheduled?
We've got that tentatively scheduled for the last meeting in May. I believe that's May 27th, am I right? So we're aiming for May 27th.
That, that must be taking up a lot of staff's time to put the whole thing together.
That's right, yes, our planner, Mike Schaller, is working very hard at addressing all the comments that came up at the last meeting. And we're working closely with the applicant and with the Department of Public Works to address the comments and concerns regarding transportation regulation. We're also working with the Housing Department to respond to comments requesting a higher ratio of the local preference. So, yes, there's a lot of staff work going into this, and we hope to have it ready for your further consideration on May 27th.
Great, thank you.
Not hearing anything, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, great meeting.
Hey, see you next time.
Yeah.
Stay safe.
Are we going to stay with Zoom? For next time? Yeah.
All right, okay, guys, wash your hands and cover your face.